Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
All right, we're gonna get started. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 1st meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners. Inspiration for today is Proverbs 10:23. Doing wrong is fun for a fool, but living wisely brings pleasure to the sensible. And I have the dog from the kennel, which is really a cute little puppy today.
Yeah, they're always cute if they stay outside.
We have a little sweetheart today. She's a little scared right now, she's shaken, but she has got the sweetest personality I've seen in a long, long time. She was picked up on Saturday and she will be available this Saturday for adoption. I think she's lab and maybe boxer mix, she's very, very sweet. So, come down to the kennel on Saturday, I'm sure there'll be a waiting line for this one. So, if you want an older dog, we have those too. We have 27 dogs in the kennel right now, so you can check us out on our website, Facebook, and see what we have available. So, come down and pick up a dog for your family today. And remember, adopt, don't shop. No, she won't. She's a sweetie. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions, Number 1, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Preparations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, did we take that first one off?
It's not off, but Jim has.
The, uh, I'm sorry.
It was for, uh, the 9-1-1?
I have it, you know, I, uh, I'm gonna be dealing with it, so we can leave it off for now.
Travel.
Did we vote on it?
No, I'm sorry. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
I do have a number of personnel issues this morning, Commissioner, with respect to hirings, and I also met with our negotiators regarding contract negotiations at the Order Department's Office and at the County Engineers' Office, 'cause I have updates on that. Also, potential sale of real estate. All of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session and discussion. So, I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into the executive session and we talk about those issues that I've explained. Thank you.
Thank you. Approve and waive the reading in the minutes of February 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under 9-1-1, I advertise for bids for 9-1-1 Operations Center Phase 1 Site Development Package, notice being the chronic on March 14th and 21st, open at 2:00 p.m. on March 30th. Mandatory pre-bid, it should be 8:00 a.m. on March 23rd at site.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Engineer advertised bids for Overland Road Resurfacing Project, New Russia Township and City of Overland, notice being the chronic on March 3rd and 10th, and open at 2:00 p.m. on March 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
O.R. Contract Area Blacktop Sandusky, the amount $318,473.40 for Barnhart Road Resurfacing Project, Brownhelm Township. Nine bids opened on February 14th, this being the most responsive, complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed honor before April 1st, complete honor before October 15th. $336,500 is being provided by ODOT, and balance will be provided by OPWC and MBGT account. Erie Blacktop does propose substitutions, but will use American Roadway, Garcia Surveyors, Triftech, and Wealthy as subcontractors.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Keep it down over there.
Approve and enter into a professional surveying services contract with Raftor A., limited in the amount of $25,000, to assist with road, bridge, and ditch projects to be paid from engineer project account. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you. Sorry, I was talking to council about these, I had some resolutions here I wanted to present from the floor, which regard to downtown realitization grants in Amherst. And I also thought we'd talk about that a little bit, but some of the wording is confusing the both of us here, so I'm not prepared to do that right now.
Okay.
And I see that we don't have, usually Don's here, and I could've asked him about it, but the, I thought maybe I was just confused, but council says the same thing I do, that the language is not conclusive enough, and so I'll bring it up next week and we can have a chat on that next week.
Okay.
When we ward those. So, other than the executive session, I yield, thank you.
Mr. Anis?
The last time I got talked, got caught talking was in the 9th grade by Mr. Weissaki, and he made me go stand in the corner. I have one matter for executive session.
I won't make you stand in the corner today, I'll let you slide, this is your first offense.
I do have one matter pending litigation for executive session.
Commissioners' Report. Well, Thursday, I want to congratulate Mayor Rittenhour for his day to the city address. He is just the best communicator I've seen in a long, long time. He keeps your attention, he's very well spoken, and he's trying to do great things for the city of Lorain. I just want to congratulate him and his administration. I was supposed to attend the Illyria Township Fire Department Steak Fry on Saturday, but I had to take my son to the emergency room, ended up with double pneumonia. I know a lot of sicknesses and stuff are going around, so anybody out there that would like to pray for him, I would, you would more than welcome that. Monday, I had a goodwill board meeting, doing good things, I may be rolling off that board, I don't know.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I know, I might be term limited, I don't know. And we're really starting to do some really good things there, so hopefully I'll be able to stay on for a little while longer. Yesterday, I went up to the 5th floor to judge the Pride Day t-shirt contest. We had 683 submissions.
Wow.
Luckily, Brandy narrows it down for me, takes out some, like, it had to be only one color, so we don't have to multiple color, pay for extra colors and certain things, she narrows them down for me. But I did pick one out. Last year was pretty simple, and kinda playing this one is a little busier, but it was really, really good. 7th grader, I actually had to like look on the back to make sure the person drew it and didn't just like copy and paste something, it was very well done, you guys will see. And then last night, Fat Tuesday, Commissioner Kayla with a wonderful fundraiser, nicely attended, and great food, actually food better than normal, I don't know.
Well, good.
Something different, so it was really good. End of my report.
And to cover a couple weeks, we didn't have anything last week for taping because of an issue, but I attended the County Commissioners Association Board meeting two weeks ago on a Friday. A lot of discussions on what's going on legislatively, discussions, we had, Tim King, the Budget Director, was actually in, talking about the Governor's proposal, and there's a lot of crazy things within that, but we'll see how that's through the legislature. But there was one-
Did you notice in the budget, the Governor's proposal, that the state actually makes more money? And then we only get one year and then we get nothing?
Exactly.
Yeah, I just-
Well, the formula's even worse, because there's some small counties that get eight years of fill-in. It was kinda crazy the way the whole formula worked, but it's only based on if he raises a sales tax a half a percent.
Right.
Everybody's not getting the whole story in his budget picture.
Not only raising sales tax, but he's also keeping more for the state, out of the whole thing. And I thought that was amazing, that they would end up replacing their tax, then making some money, and then telling us we only had a year to get our stuff together and they were gonna take it away from us.
So, we'll see how it plays here. One of the major concerns of legislation being brought up in the Senate, they asked the Commissioners' Association to endorse it, it was about making prevailing wage an opt-in, where you wouldn't have to follow the prevailing wage rules as they currently stand. We had a lot of discussion on it. The Municipal League endorsed it already, the Township Association, the CCAO Board endorsed it about 23 to 11. We tried to hold it off, just the issues, prevailing wages, paying people a decent wage, and it makes everybody on the same playing field, so.
We had some inquiries on that, on the CDBG. Mm-hmm. And I think we should make it clear that CDBG is a federal funds, and regardless of what the state does, CDBG will still have to be prevailing wage, was it the Paisley-Wagner Act or something along those lines?
Whatever.
We-
David Beckham.
David Beckham. Wage Act.
The, but we have to, we have to pay that on CDBG, 'cause there has been some inquiries, given that the state's moving in that direction while we weren't.
Right.
Federal funds are exempt from the state requirements.
So, we had a lot of discussion on that, we weren't able to do anything with it. Again, congratulations, Kudrowski's, the Poochball, always amazing. My Aunt Charlene was named the queen of the ball.
Yeah.
Which is cool, I got to see her yesterday morning when I was at Kudrowski's, picking up. We had a metropolitan conference call for metropolitan counties, Commissioner Kudrowski and I were on, again, talking about the issues affecting the large counties across the state, a lot of discussion on the opioid abuse and how it's gonna be handled. And then I did, I missed the Illyria Township Steak Fry, I had tickets, but I was at Road to Hope, and they had wonderful things to say about you, Commissioner.
They did?
Yes, they did.
Aw.
So, my wife actually said I was rude, "You should've gotten more engaged." I said, "Well, Lori's handling it, we all sort of take something here," but great job you did, benefit for-
They do good work, great work there.
Wonderful work there, I give them really credit, and there was a benefit there for a gentleman who's going through some difficult times. I spoke yesterday at Womadis. Tony booked me in October or November, I had no clue what Womadis was. It was held at the, at Remens Bowl and Alley, their little thing they have there, but it's women, mothers and daughters, it's a social club. Probably 22 to 24 women there yesterday, but I went there and I said, "Well, how long am I supposed to speak this?" "Speak about 15 minutes about county government, we'll ask you a couple questions." An hour and 15 minutes later, I got to leave, said, "It's quarter to two, guys, I really gotta get out of here." But really nice, like to thank them, Kitty Crescent invited me. So, again, just nice engaging, had some great questions. Again, people aren't familiar with what county government does, and trying to explain what actually our responsibilities are, I know Commissioner Lundey talks about that all the time.
Yes, I do.
But, uh, that's the end of my report.
Okay. Yeah, nice event yesterday that you had at Jack Globe, always-
Thank you.
Great way to get ready for Lent. I just wanted to, I guess, start with, I know that we weren't taped last week, it was interesting, I had a gentleman come up to me, I think it was Saturday night, at the Illyria Township Firefighter Steak Fry, and he said to me, "Boy, you guys keep talking about the same thing." And I said, "Keep talking about the same thing." He said, "Yeah, I watched the, the meeting today on cable, and, and you were talking about the same stuff you were talking about the prior week."
Oh, it's a repeat.
And I said, "Well, that's because they must've run the-"
They did.
So, we need to put a little graphic up there, it says, "Repeat, first aired," you know, just like when they do the playback of the Indians games. But, so anyhow, we're back on, but I know there are a couple things that, you know, we wanted to try to cover the other week, but since we weren't taped, we want to make sure the public's aware. I guess, I would just encourage members of the public that when you have questions about county government, we have this really great technology here, it's called telephones, and would really appreciate it if you'd pick up the phone, give us a call, and see if we can answer some of the questions for you. I was talking with Lisa Hobart, asking her on one of the letters to the editor, if, if the gentleman, Mr. Bantzig from Grafton, had ever called to ask about budget information or ask for anything that's public record, believe me, we're very transparent here, we, you know, you can see whatever you want to see, just give us a call, and under Ohio Revised Code, if it's public record-
Or-
Have at it, so, you know.
Checkbooks online.
Exactly. So, I just wanted to make Mr. Bantzig aware that we did not receive a phone call from you requesting any information about the budget. You were questioning, saying that you have a right to see it, absolutely couldn't agree more. That you need to be able to evaluate it, totally agree with you on that. What's to hide? Nothing. All you have to do is ask for it. And to once again remind you that, dating all the way back to October of 2015, thanks to Lisa and the hard work that she's done, that information's been loaded online as to how this office spends its money and spends your tax dollars, and that's ohiocheckbook.com, ohiocheckbook.com. It's all right there. In fact, we were either the first or among the first, I think Mahoning was right up there with us. So, like I said, pick up the phone, give us a call, or go to ohiocheckbook.com if you have questions after that, feel free to give us a call, you can call my office, we'll talk about it, but we're, we're open and transparent. And for the county administrator, I guess I was hoping that maybe you could clear up for folks, we had a letter here from Mr. Baxter, sounds like he attends the meeting or attended a meeting, or at least watched it on, on TV, claiming that we've already spent the sales tax dollars, because the new 9-1-1 dispatch center on Burns Road is set to be about a $6 million project. So, could you please explain how we're handling that project?
Sure.
So that he has the information, since he also didn't call?
The, and I find it stressing, as you do, we do return phone calls that are, that are properly placed, let me, let me set the tone for that, we do receive emails to our web portal, if they're, if they're responsible, we respond to them. The communication's an important thing with, with the citizenry, and we do take that seriously. Now, we do see, we do get some not-so-responsible ones occasionally, and we don't respond to those, I mean, 'cause simply no way to, and, but I do get stressed like you do, when there's letters to the editor making accusations and nobody's made any contact with us to ask a question. This one specifically referred to the tower being built at the new 9-1-1 center out at the college. We actually didn't talk a lot about that center, because we really don't want to bring a lot of attention to it, but unfortunately, when the tower started going out, one of, one of our newspapers went out and was taking pictures of it, so it's, it's not a very well guarded secret where we're going.
And you now clearly see it.
Right. But the, the tower was in the works last year, well before the election, and, and the works there, buying the building, happened before the election. We were able to get, get a great purchase price on the building, we probably got it for about 30 cents on the dollar, and it's really great. Was built to be a call center, that's what 9-1-1 is, it's a call center. I, you know, if somebody had built a building for us, that's the building they would've built. I was amazed when we went in there and we saw, it was just like, bam, this is great. We're gonna, the renovations are just really freshening the building, we're adding some more additional office space, 'cause we need a little bit more office space inside the bullpen area, but we're, we're talking very minor amount of renovations, and you just, I think you just left the Phase 1 here, was that for 9-1-1? A lot of that's parking lot changes and things like that, to make the building more usable for us, the way we deem it necessary to be used. All of that work was being done last year, well before the, the tax increase was on the ballot, and then, and then, by necessity, imposed in December. And all those funds are coming from the 9-1-1 levy. We've been saving money now for a couple years to buy new equipment and redo the 9-1-1. Our current center is very well dated, although the Commissioners extended that and built onto it in 2000. It really wasn't a very good build in 2000, it shouldn't have been put there. It served its purpose for the last 15 years, but it became, needed replacing very quickly. So, people are gonna go, "Oh, well, you wasted that money in 2000." Well, no, we didn't waste money from 2000, the old center's gonna become our backup center. Our backup was at Golden Acres, it's, it's not a good backup, some counties don't even have a backup PSAP, but, but always, we always had a backup, it's not a really good backup out there, we have to get out of that building anyway out there. And the equipment is, you know, so old, that we could keep some traffic going, but, but we can't rely upon it on a long-term basis. So, rather than build a new backup, and then go to the new backup while we built the new 9-1-1 center, we decided to build a new 9-1-1 center and move from the current center, make some improvement to the current technology there, although that's dated, but it's good for a backup, and save money, save a lot of money by doing it that way. So, all of these things have not come about since December with the tax increase. In fact, none of them have, they've been in, they've been in the works for, some of them for a year, two or three. Look, we've been looking for a building for a year and a half, the right, right fit. We were, we're still looking for the next generation equipment, we're gonna be required to upgrade to the next generation equipment. The state's got a lot of initiatives going on, they want the equipment to be able to talk to each other across county lines and have that interconductivity between, between those things, much like we've been doing with the software around the county. I don't know if they're ever gonna pull those pieces of that mosaic to get, together, get the whole picture, but you have to have that capability, whether it gets done or not, I don't know. We've seen these kind of pushes before, and they just never really get, get completed. We did all the GIS mapping to support all this last year, I think there was, between the state grant and the money we spent was almost a million dollars in the state mapping. We spent a million and a half dollars over the last two years improving all the microwave capability for the communications in Lorain County. And we still have a few little dead spots around Lorain County, and we're gonna deal with that after the new 9-1-1's up. When I say dead spots, we, we have safety forces that get in areas of this county that don't have cellphone or radio capability, and this day and age, that's just unacceptable. We've improved that vastly when we took over the dispatching. They narrow-banded all of those frequencies with, with the FCC, and when they did that, we lost a lot of capability that we had to improve, and 9-1-1 did that for all of Lorain County, all of the police force and safety forces. So, a lot, all of this has been going on for years, it's not new.
9-1-1 funds, 9-1-1 funds-
9-1-1 funds.
Nothing to do with the sales tax.
Correct.
The 9-1-1 levy that voters passed years ago.
And also, let me add, that because we're one of the few counties that have a single primary PSAP, we get, we get additional funding from the state that isn't divided up or reduced, and, and we bring in quite a bit of money from a cellphone. It's, I think it's 25 cents per cellphone registered, but it's several hundreds of thousands of dollars a year.
Lowest in the country on that, most states are anywhere from 50 cents to a dollar per line.
I don't know why the state doesn't raise that, it would certainly support some of the smaller communities, recognizing that in, in the more rural communities, especially down by Appalachia, they really struggle with, it's not unusual not to have good 9-1-1 in those areas, and that's why the, the state has got a committee going and they're looking at that. People think that 9-1-1 is just there, it's not just there, there are communities without a 9-1-1 system. The major urban metropolitan areas have them, but we're, we're used to that, we take it for granted that it just exists. So, if, if the gentleman liked the call, we can have a conversation on that, and there was something else he mentioned in there, it wasn't just the tower, it was-
The fact that we knew that the state was gonna give us additional money.
Yes, I gotta, I gotta, let me suggest this, I did not know-
The governor called us.
I did not know that you guys were talking to the governor so much, and had the inside track on what was gonna come out, well, well after the position you made, but as we talked earlier, even if Governor Kasich's plan gets passed, which will be another huge state sales tax increase, remembering that they've increased it 3/4% in the last 12 years.
Be another half a percent.
And, and let me, let me say this, while I know we angered some people in Lorain County, they passed those 3/4% without any vote of the people.
That's right.
And now they're looking to pass another half a percent, and-
That goes, all that goes to Columbus.
And, and the administration down there's talking about returning a couple million dollars to us, but that half percent will be $20 million leaving Lorain County.
Yep.
And we're gonna get a year of a couple million back, and we're on our own again?
Thanks.
All right?
How generous.
Well, we didn't see much, all we saw from the last sales tax increase that they, they unilaterally imposed, was a decrease in the money coming back in the local government funds. Now, I know we're on our own, and we've talked many times that we gotta, we gotta, we gotta take care of our own problems here, and we're going to. But, but we can only take care of them if they stop taking our resources away.
Right.
So, I am sorry to get a little angry, but you know, people-
As I said, Tim King, when we were talking, when he was talking, the governor's trying to get us more towards a sales tax and less towards an income tax-supported state government. That's his intent, is to lower the state, was it, yeah, .17%, the next cut, whatever he's proposing, I mean, the budget bill's about that big.
Commissioner, you know, I started reading through some of that stuff, it's, it's really big, you gotta read through it, 'cause it's, there's all kinds of things that are changed in the code, little pieces, just, sometimes it's just a few words in a, in a section someplace that's in this budget bill. I really don't care what they do to fund state government, I just want them to stop-
Taking it from us.
And, and allow us to govern locally with, with the sufficient resources to do so. And I understand they have some issues there, and they gotta solve those issues, whether it moves from income to sales tax, but, but more money's leaving this county than ever and less if it's coming back. And, and I understand the common good that we have to, we're all together in this state, but, but somehow, we're lacking the resources to do the job correctly. And we're not spending a lot of money. Somebody also said that, I think in that article, about money left over for rainy day fund and things like that. They have, we haven't collected $1 yet.
Right.
And we won't see $1 until later this summer, and, and you haven't made any decisions except, and we should talk about this, we've given some extra appropriation to the prosecutor's office, we've given some extra appropriation to the coroner, we've given some extra appropriation for, for some cause with the Sheriff's Department, all the things we talked about in December that were problems. We immediately went in, and we, we've already started balancing that back, and we've, you've already made those decisions with the appropriations, so that we can start working on this problem. And you didn't go out and say, "Look at me, look what I did," you just did it, you did what you said you were gonna do, and you did it very quickly.
Right.
And what people gotta do is ask us, and they'll, they'll know.
Yep, yeah, we're very transparent here, all you have to do is, is ask, and we'll get you the information, and, but as we said, you know, the state has basically sold out taxpayers locally, and, and, you know, so every time you have to go vote on a, another levy or whatever it may be, it's, it's all because everything gets kicked down to the local level, and your money's going to Columbus, for some reason they think it's theirs instead of yours, and you should be demanding that it comes back home, otherwise, all of us wouldn't be in the position that we're in. Had a chance to tend the Lorain Mayor's address, Mayor Rittenhour, yes, once again, doing a, doing a great job, and I thought he made a really key point about the importance of Lorain City Schools. Not happy at all about the state being so aggressive and wanting to take over the school district, you know, they kinda maneuvered through the back door and were less than honest when they took over the Youngstown Schools, and, and now on the verge of doing the same thing with Lorain Schools, I would just caution that everybody in the community should be community should be very concerned, because the ultimate hidden agenda of Columbus is to privatize public education, they love their charter schools that have no accountability, or little accountability, certainly not equal accountability, and I couldn't agree more that certainly would like to see Superintendent Graham stay in the mix, and local individuals be involved in what's taking place to direct our schools. Everybody there's been working so hard, in Loraine, I think the teachers, students, administration, everybody's been working really hard to move forward, but the problem is, the state keeps raising the bar and changing the rules, and it's, you know, it's hard to keep up with all the changes, but they like the chaos, because it makes it difficult to keep pace with everything, and it's almost as though they want to set you up for failure, and that's unfortunate, because it always comes down to it's about the kids and what's best for the kids. But unfortunately, Columbus has their hidden agenda that's pretty obvious, I think, hopefully to most. The Elyria Township Firefighter Steak Fry at DeLuca's, I think that was the same night they had the, was it the Red Heart Ball or whatever was going on at the same time in the building for the Heart Association, but the firefighter steak fry, well-attended, lots of folks there, and can't thank them enough for all that they do. Having worked as a reporter for 20 years, I can never understand people walking in the burning buildings for a living, but certainly, they do the job and do it well. The same night, ran over to the North Ridgeville Community Cares Soup for the Spirit, just a great group of people, I've been going to that for a number of years, this was the eighth year, and really helping a lot of needy families there in the community of North Ridgeville. The Catholic Credit Union held their annual meeting in Avon Lake on Sunday, and just a good community group, and easy folks to work with, and always, that's well-attended. The Main Street Elyria held an after-hours get-together yesterday, that's why I was late to your event, but they provide an opportunity for Mayor Brenda to talk about the upcoming bicentennial for Elyria, which is very exciting, and obviously, the city's in the process too of raising money for a new fountain on the square, I understand that's gonna be